Okay, I'm recording. We can go ahead and do our statement prior to the start of the meeting.
I'm the board president, Don Prosser, and this meeting is being called, pardon? This meeting is being called to be held as a virtual meeting in compliance with the governor's finding of COVID. That's an emergency justifying this meeting. I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Don?
Here.
Susan? Julian?
Here.
Phil?
Here.
Joyce?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Chastity? Roland?
Here.
Harriet?
Here.
We do have a quorum. At this point, we have been notified that we have a visitor. Our policy is to ask the visitor to introduce himself at this time and present any issues which the visitor wishes to have discussed. Visitors wishing to address specific agenda items will be granted two to five minutes at the discretion of me as president, not to exceed a total of 20 minutes. Library Board may cut short any comments that are irrelevant, repetitious, or disruptive. With that involved, we'll invite our visitor to identify herself.
For himself, we have De Paris more here and the Paris. I don't know if you have the ability to speak on your device or not. If you do, feel free to speak at this time. To unmute yourself, you can just click on the lower left portion of your screen, the little microphone that will unmute you. Or if you wish, you can also type into the chat box and just say hi, but you don't have to say anything if you don't want to. I'll give you another couple of seconds and then I'll go ahead and mute you. And if you do have any questions, feel free to put them in the chat box. No? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and remove permission to talk. But as I said, De Paris, if you want to, if you raise any questions or anything, feel free to put something in the chat box to us and we will address your questions. So, welcome.
Our first item on the agenda is the president's report. Two matters. First of all, one of our board members has an excused absence. That would be Chastity for reasons of health and of her, one of her family members. The second item on the president's report is the election of trustee officers, the Office of President, Vice President to begin service July 2021. Is there a motion to proceed?
I move proceed with the election of officers. Can I make a nomination at this time?
Yes, you may.
I nominate Don Prosser to continue as president.
Second.
Does anyone else wish to be heard? There are none. The nominations will be closed. All those, we need to vote everything by roll call, so I'll ask for a roll call vote. Roland?
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Harriet?
What are we voting on? Because my computer went down for a second.
Don being president again.
Yes, yes, definitely.
That's two votes for Harriet.
Susan is here now, so you can call for her vote.
So, I guess I'm confused. So, the terms that we all agreed to last year are one-year terms? Is that correct?
No, they're two-year terms.
Well, because I thought in the director's report, it said that Don's term was not expiring.
Oh, you're right. Don is not. I'm looking at the directors. Right. Susan and Don are continuing. The terms that are expiring are Julian Pae, and he may not serve another term as treasurer. And then Roland is, his term as secretary is expiring, but he may serve a second term as secretary.
I take back my vote for Don.
Me too. Well, I misunderstood the agenda item, I suppose. Then, so the first item to be voted on would be the treasurer, then, Diana?
Yes, you need a nomination and a vote for your treasurer.
We have a nomination for the Office of Treasurer.
What does the treasurer do?
The treasurer is responsible for keeping a very close eye on, on the financial reports. And they sign the checks, although they don't have, that isn't really technically done in person. Occasionally, we have had, like, if we go to open up a new bank account or something, the treasurer will have to come and sign. So, but on our, on this particular board, because we have a finance manager on this library, the treasurer doesn't really have to, to do the types of things that a treasurer would do on, say, like, the Friends of the Carbondale Public Library, where that person is actually doing what Gwen does.
So, it's not an onerous job, trying to make it sound really great so that somebody will leap up and say, yes, I want to do it. I mean, I assume they also occasionally you have to do a financial meeting, separate finance meeting.
You do have to go to the finance meeting. There, the chair of the finance meeting is typically the finance meeting, the committee meets once at the end of April, at the end of the fiscal year, and that meeting only takes about 10 minutes. It's just to approve bills that come in between the last board meeting and the end of the fiscal year.
I will volunteer to do that.
Thank you, Barbara.
The nomination.
Wait, close the nominations.
Right.
Motion is made, seconded to, I'll second that, to close the nominations for Treasurer. Barb will be nominated. Call or vote.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Harriet?
Yes.
Congratulations, Barbara.
Was there a motion and a second on that? I got that Barbara volunteered.
I took Barbara's volunteers, her motion, and I seconded.
And you seconded it, okay.
And then the other office that we need to have nominations for, Diana?
You need to vote in your secretary. Roland has served one term as secretary, so he is eligible to serve a second consecutive two-year term, or someone else can take that.
Thank you. Is there, are there any nominations?
Well, nominate Roland to continue a second term.
A second.
Are there any other nominations? If not, then we'll take our vote.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Me, okay. Harriet?
Yes.
I would say congratulations for Roland, but I think that's probably unnecessary. That would bring us to the secretary's report. We have minutes of the April, April, excuse me, May 12 regular meeting and minutes of the May 25 special meeting. Is there a motion to approve the May 12, 2021 minutes?
I still move.
Second.
She'll be seconded to approve the minutes of May 12. Any discussion?
Don?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Roland.
Roland, okay, thank you.
Will you call the vote, Roland?
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Harriet?
Yes.
That motion carries. Is there a motion with regard, regard to the May 25 minutes of the special board meeting?
I move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? There are none. Call the roll.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Harriet?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to Correspondents' and Communications. Anything to report, Diana?
You got an email from Charlie Howe with an offer of a donation, which we will discuss later in closed session.
Anything else?
No.
That would bring us to the financial report. You received a supplemental report of bills, I think, today, as well as what was previously provided. Is there any, is there any questions or a motion on that?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the bills as distributed. Any questions for Gwen? If you're ready for the vote, we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Roland, Dennis, Harriet?
Yes.
Those bills are approved. We have a financial report for the month of May of 2021. Any discussion of that? Questions? There are none. Is there a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
I'll second.
Been moved in second to approve the financial report of May of 2021. Any discussion? Call the roll, Roland.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Roland? Yes. Harriet?
Yes.
That motion carries. That brings us to your report, Diana.
Okay, building and grounds maintenance. We, Josh has been doing a little bit of improvement here. He finished up the kitchen and is working on another, like, little maintenance closet that we have, sprucing that up. We will be proceeding with the brush roof replacement. Since we have some programs in June, we've requested that that work be completed later, so in July or August. We don't think that'll be a problem. Roofers are having trouble getting the materials that they need to do projects anyway, so I think they'll be grateful for that extra wiggle room rather than us being real antsy to get it done. And then COVID procedures. Right now, we are proceeding, you know, with a two-hour limit. And everyone is required to wear a mask. The state of Illinois has, the governor has renewed the state of emergency through June 28, I believe. But the, we, the state anticipates going to stage five on about June 12. So, that additional state of emergency allows us to continue to proceed as we have. But once that is lifted, I'm not clear exactly on what rights we'll have in terms of being able to require masks in the building. We will not, if, if the state of emergency is not renewed, we will not be able to have your July board meeting virtually. We'll have to be in person, which means that we will have to stop quarantining books because we will need the meeting room space in order to do that. So, that's one change that would definitely happen. What I believe I'll do is just wait until I see potentially some direction on what stage five means to local organizations and businesses and, and then hold a, a meeting with the Emergency Planning Committee to determine what we want to do in terms of, in terms of rules about what patrons can and cannot do in the library, what we'll do if somebody on staff gets COVID, that kind of thing. So, so that will take place once we have a little bit more direction from the state. The next thing is revision of the borrower's card policy. I did hear from two board members. And Roland had had, didn't like the, wasn't super pleased with the wording on the veterans exemption, the way that that is titled. And let's see, where is that? It is fee exemptions for non-resident cards for veterans killed or severely disabled in the line of duty. He thought that it was, and it sounds a little clunky to say for veterans killed when really it is applying to the spouse, the surviving spouse, rather than the veteran. I'm not really sure of, of a better way to word that. He had suggested maybe fee exemptions for non-resident cards for certain veterans. That sounds a little weak to me, too. So, I'm not sure of the best way to reword that, or if it does need to be reworded. You could say fee exemptions for non-resident cards for severely disabled, for veterans severely disabled. Or in parentheses, or surviving spouses of those killed in the line of duty. I could change it to that if that sounds a little better.
Say families, does it include children?
Well, no, unless those children live with the wife. And these exemptions are by law, so I can't really add to these exemptions. They have to be exempt exactly who they say they exempt. So, so no, it is specifically to surviving spouse.
I, I did notice that, too, Roland.
I think, I think surviving spouses of those killed or
Okay.
It clarifies it enough that, you know, we don't look, it doesn't look, sounds stupid to
Right.
to say we're going to give a library card to somebody who's dead.
Right. Okay.
That's how I read it.
Diana, in terms of the designation of the injured or disabled veteran, why don't we just say qualified veterans? And then that's defined by the statute and then the policy. So, we don't have to suggest things on that.
So, I could just say fee exemptions for non-resident cards for qualified veterans and surviving spouses?
I think so.
Okay.
Like that.
That's good. I like that. Okay.
Do you want to act on that in new business?
The only other thing that came up was Barbara had mentioned that I do use the singular they, there. That actually was in place on this, on this policy years back. I didn't actually change that language, but could be changed to his or her, but, but at the moment, you know, just as language changed from, from using just the masculine to using his, his or her, language has once again changed to be even further inclusive. So, they and there is actually accepted. And I did look at, like, an article from Merriam-Webster that, you know, basically said this is being accepted. So, so I'd rather kind of just leave it as that. I remember a couple of years back, we had a teenager who was in the audience who got really upset about our, about the board arguing for, in favor of his or her instead of using they or there, and actually wanted to join the board. No, it didn't end up kind of pursuing it when the opportunity came up, but, but felt that strongly about it. So, I think people do feel that strongly about they and there. So, if it's all right with you, I'd rather just leave that in there. Are there any other changes that people want to see? And, and more important than, than the grammar, are you happy with the content of the policy?
Well, I don't see that we have anything to say about it. The legislature has decided it. So,
Okay.
whether or not we like it or not, this, this is, the legislature made the decision.
Right. Well, there are other changes in here that are, you know, that go beyond those, those two fee exemptions. There is a little bit of a change in the, in use of the card. So, for example, I upped the, the minimum fines from $1 to $5 and, and made it get, you know, kind of stated the wiggle room that we give, that we use to work with people. Because if we didn't do that, no one would be checking out materials. We'd probably have 5% of our library patrons who never have a fine or always pay it off. So, if you're okay with that, that's a number four under use of library card. So, that's, I think everything else was kind of just, oh, and I did make it so that children who are five and up can get a library card. I took out the wording about signing their name legibly because that, too, is ableist. And don't want to discriminate against kids who may have a disability that causes some difficulty with that.
Well, and if you require a child to sign it legibly, you should require adults to sign.
Legibly as well.
Wow.
Yeah. True. All right. So, those, those are the revisions, just to make sure everybody is aware of, of them and, and
Does that require a board vote, Diana?
Just the, the, it does, the, just the general borrower's card revision with the amended, that one amended change to how we title eligible qualified veterans.
So, we have a motion to approve that revision of the borrower's card policy.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roland, call our vote.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Roland? Yes. Harriet?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next thing is about to appoint your FOIA and OMA officers. And those people will be required to take online training. So, the, and I will also tell you that the, the online training site is currently, as far as I know, still down. It got hacked. So, so I'm sure that the, I'm sure that the requirement to get your training done within 30 days of being appointed will be extended if that, if that site is not back up. But normally, your FOIA officers are myself and Gwen because we have access to the records that are requested. And those have to be answered in a timely manner, and it is good to have two people in case one of us is on vacation. Gwen, are you still okay with being the backup FOIA?
Yes, I'm fine.
Thanks. And then the OMA officers are usually myself and the board president to ensure that we are compliant with the Open Meetings Act.
I move that we continue with the same people in the same positions.
I'll second. I'll second.
Any discussion? Call our roll, Roland.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Yes.
Roland? Yes. Harriet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Want to tell us about closed minutes meetings?
Yeah, you have a list that I enclosed with your board packet, I believe. And you just need to decide if you want to keep all of those closed or open any of them, or I guess you could also say you want to read any of them specifically during a closed session. We could pull them up and see if you want to keep them closed. Usually, you keep them closed, but you are required to take a look at it and see what you want to do twice a year.
I move that we keep them closed.
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, call roll.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. That's it. I don't have anything else under other.
Are there any committee reports? There are none. We move on to injured behavior.
We do have a person who was banned this past month. They got a lot of chances to stick around. They were asked to leave a couple of different times, just for the day, two or three times. And they had a lot of trouble keeping the mask on. And really would not move anywhere other than right in front of the door. And had some, some difficulty with rambling to themselves in a way that often was insulting to people within earshot. Said something inappropriate to children who were walking in the door, and the parents came over, and it was a very big incident. So, that person had many, many warnings. And has been banned from the property. My recommendation would be to continue with that ban for one year. This person is from out of state, probably not likely to be still here in a year. But I think that the family, if they were to see that person in at any point this summer, would be extremely upset. So, yeah. That, so that does require a motion and a second. I can answer any questions for you if you like.
We have a motion to deal with this disruptive.
Let's ban him for a year.
I think Barbara is supposed to, is trying to say something and is muted, too.
Yeah, I just wondered why we just don't ban this person permanently.
You can ban until and unless there's further action from the board. So, if that person were to reach out and say, you know, that they wanted this reevaluated, you could revisit. So, it's up to you guys, whatever you want to, want to move.
You seem to think that banning them for a year is really permanent because you don't expect them to be here. Maybe that's your kind of line of reasoning.
Yeah.
You leave that door open. If they don't, you know, leave the area, so.
Then they'll be back, right?
I'm kind of with Barbara on this one.
Okay. Do you guys have a motion and a second?
I move that we ban this patron permanently.
Okay. You might want to change that to until and unless there's further action from the board.
I'll second.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I would ask the question, was this patron insulting, or what exactly was the course of the conduct that was problematic? Was it threatening? What, what are we dealing with? was the course of the conduct that was problematic? Was it threatening? What, what are we dealing with?
The family refused to say, or it was difficult to get out of them, I guess what it was that, that the person said to the children. But the staff had heard this person say some insulting things in, that were racial in regard to a patron who had been in earlier. So we assume that it may have been some, it may have been something very similar.
I see.
So.
Are there any other questions or discussion? If not, call a roll.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Roland, yes, Harriet?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're about to discuss a matter dealing with real estate and possible acquisition of property. This is a matter that is available for the board to discuss in closed session. That is the judgment of the board. If we were to do that, there would have to be a motion asking to go into closed session to discuss the acquisition of, of real property.
I move that we go into closed session.
I second.
All right, one moment. You can call roll on that.
Roland?
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Roland, yes, Harriet?
Yes.
Under the rules of the, of the Open Meetings Act, we will be going into closed session, and only members of the board and our invited guests, which will include the, the director and the, and Gwen may, may continue to attend, and we can proceed in that basis.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and.
Close this, let us know.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and stop this recording, and then I will begin a second recording, so one moment. And I should also say that if any action does get taken, we will go back into open session. So we'll have another recording, and we'll, we'll announce any final action that's decided, so.
Is there a visitor left?
Yes, yes, thank you for asking. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and stop this recording. Okay, we are recording again. We can re-adjourn this meeting.
We'll need to call roll again to show our attendance. Roland? Can you call the roll, Roland?
Don?
Yes. Who's present?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Here.
Roland, yes, Harriet?
Yeah.
As president of the board, I can report that the board, library's been in closed session to discuss matters that were authorized under the Open Meetings Act to be held in closed session. No, no board action or formal votes were taken, and no action is taken in that regard. Is there any other motion or business to come before the board?
Don, you want me to make the motion?
I think so.
Okay. I move that the Building and Grounds Committee will meet to discuss the appointment of a real, real estate broker to represent the library in the acquisition of the vacant lot, whatever the address number is.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
409 West Main.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion? Roland, call the roll.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Roland, yes, Harriet?
Yes.
That motion carries. Is there any other business? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I got, I have a couple of questions. Diana, how is the Patrick King's family?
They are doing okay. Let's, since this is absolutely not library business, can we go ahead and stop this and adjourn, and we'll stop, and I'll just tell you, because that's private information, so, so we'll go ahead with the 5:38 adjournment, and let me stop this recording.